Council called the meeting in order for the record. It is September thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two at four thirty-four P. M. We'll begin this evening's work session with roll call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Strater.
Here.
Councilman Burnt.
I'm here.
Councilwoman Perro.
Here.
Councilman Borden.
Here.
Councilman Hoagland.
Here.
Mayor Simison.
Here. And next item is the adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
I move adoption of the agenda as published.
Second.
A motion of second to adopt the agenda as published. Is there any discussion? If not, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. You guys have it, and the agenda is adopted. Next item up is the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
Just going through the consent agenda, just checking on things. Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the consent agenda and for the mayor to sign and click to attest.
Second. Have a motion of a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? If not, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. You guys have it, and the consent agenda is agreed to. There are no items moved from the consent agenda, so we'll move on to item eleven under Department Commission Reports. That is the second request for consideration of denial of Burnside Ridge's saves age two thousand and twenty-one dash zero zero seven zero. Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, just for the records purposes. So this request for reconsideration was based on the amended denial. If you recall, for the record, that we had a request for reconsideration of your original denial. It was recommended or remanded back simply for some corrections to be made to the document, not for reconsideration of the decision itself. That was that was prepared for you. That has been approved. This is a request for you to reconsider it once again. It didn't raise any new issues, but that's up to you on whether or not you want to grant the request to reconsider or deny the request to reconsider or amend it again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council, any questions for Mr. Mayor?
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
After reviewing the second request for reconsideration from the applicant for Burnside Ridge, I've reviewed the decision, the findings, and the minutes of the denial, and did not find any error that would cause me to reconsider or remand this decision. Therefore, I move to deny the request for reconsideration.
Second.
Have a motion of a second to deny the second request for reconsideration. Is there any discussion? If not, quick call roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Strater.
Aye.
Burnt.
Perro.
Aye.
Borden.
Aye.
Hoagland.
Aye.
All eyes, motion carries, and the second I request is a free to not reconsider. Next item is item twelve, which is Mayor's Office, two thousand and twenty-two City of Meridian Citizen Survey Findings Report. Open this item with comments from Mr. Miles.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. Here this afternoon for the two thousand and twenty-two citizen survey results. Not going to bury the lead. We have our consultant with us, Jason Marado, who's going to walk through the survey and his presentation, and then I'll come back up and we can address any questions that you might have and go from there. So with that, I'll invite Jason up.
Jason, welcome. It's nice to see you again in person.
Yes, great. Thanks, Mayor. Council members, it's great to be back here. I missed coming here in two thousand and twenty because we were in the early stages of COVID, so it's great to be back in Meridian. Today, I'm going to walk through the key findings from the two thousand and twenty-two resident survey. The full report is very detailed and comprehensive. So today, I'm going to walk through really our key findings from the survey.
Just a quick background about ETC Institute.
We're based in the Kansas City area, but we're a national leader in providing market research for local governments. We've been doing this type of work for forty years now, and in the last ten years alone, we've conducted surveys in more than a thousand communities all across the country. So this is really the type of work that we specialize in. Today, I'll go through the purpose and methodology of the survey. What I call the bottom line upfront are our main conclusions from the survey, and then I'll go through the major survey findings to show how we came to those conclusions, and I'll be happy to answer any questions as well. So there are several reasons to conduct a survey like this. One is to get an objective assessment of how satisfied residents are with major city services, and also to determine what residents feel are the top priorities for the community. We're also able to measure trends from the previous surveys. This is the fourth resident survey, and each time, we tweak the questions a little bit, but most of the questions remain the same so that we can measure trends over time. And we're also able to compare your results with other communities across the country. So the survey was administered by a combination of mail and online to randomly selected residents throughout the city. We ended up with five hundred and four completed surveys. Our goal was five hundred, so we accomplished that. The five hundred and four surveys at the ninety-five percent level of confidence has a margin of error of plus or minus four point three percent. So essentially, that means that if we conducted this survey the same way a hundred times, ninety-five times, the results would be plus or minus four point three percent from what we're reporting. So the results aren't perfect, but the margin of error is small. Here, we have a map of the city. The red dots are households that completed the survey, so we had a good distribution throughout the city. This is similar to what we've had on previous surveys, and we also had a good representation from key demographic groups such as age, gender, and income. So here are our main conclusions from the survey. We found that residents have a very positive perception of the city. Nearly nine out of ten residents rated Meridian as an excellent or a good place to live, and nearly nine out of ten also rate the city as an excellent or a good place to raise a family. Overall, the satisfaction ratings are a little bit lower this year than they were in two thousand and twenty, but that's a trend we've seen all over the country the past couple of years. We think largely COVID-related, so it's not really a surprise. But the satisfaction ratings still remain very high. In fact, you rate above the national average in forty out of the forty-one areas that we compared. The only area that rated it lower was public transportation. There's a couple of areas I especially wanted to point out. One is the overall quality of city services, where you're rated twenty-five percentage points above the U. S. Average. That's one of the most important questions on the survey because they were asking residents to take into account all the services that you're providing and really give an overall satisfaction rating for how well you're doing. If the ratings are high in that area, it means they're high in a lot of the other more specific areas that we included on the survey as well. And then the area where you're rated the farthest above the U. S. Average is customer service from city employees, where you're rated forty-two percentage points above the U. S. Average. And the top overall priorities are roads, traffic, and transportation, growth and development, and education, schools, and those were the top three priorities on the last survey as well. So we found that residents, I mentioned, have a very positive perception of the city. This was the very first question on the survey. We asked residents to rate their perception in a number of different ways. There's a number of questions on the survey asked on an eleven-point scale from zero to ten. So the dark blue are ratings of nine and ten. Those are the most positive ratings. The light blue is seven to eight. The gray is four to six, so not a bad rating, but more of average. And then the pink are ratings of zero to three. So the blue are the positive, the pink are the red, pink are the negative. Obviously, the positive ratings far outweigh the negative overall. If you look at the top of this chart, most residents gave very positive ratings to Meridian as a place to live and as a place to raise a family. We also asked residents about the quality of life in the city. Most residents feel like customer service from city employees and the overall quality of city services exceeds expectations. In fact, for customer service from city employees, forty-three percent feel it greatly exceeds their expectations. Again, the dark blue is a nine or a ten, means it greatly exceeds their expectations. We asked residents how they rate the value they receive for city tax dollars and fees. Most residents gave positive responses. Sixty-eight percent gave a rating of seven or above, feeling that they do receive good value for city taxes and fees. And here, we asked residents to rate major categories of city services. On this question, we're asking residents to rate these areas at the big picture departmental level, and then later on in the survey, we asked about some more specific areas within some of these categories. So once again, the positive ratings far outweigh the negative. The lowest rated area was planning and zoning, but even for that, you have forty-three percent who gave positive ratings, twenty-five percent negative. For most of these areas, five percent or less of residents gave negative ratings. So very, very positive ratings really across the board. So we also found that satisfaction with the overall quality of city services is high in all parts of the city. Here again, we have a map of the city, and we broke the results out by census block group. So these are very small areas. We created a map like this for every question asked on that eleven-point scale, so there's well over a hundred maps in the report. This one is for the overall quality of city services. The entire map is blue, and in fact, a couple of areas are dark blue, which is the highest possible rating. So this means that residents in all parts of the city are satisfied with the overall quality of city services. Sometimes what happens is, even if the ratings are very positive overall, once you start breaking it into these smaller areas, you'll see some areas where residents are not as satisfied or don't feel like they're getting as good of services as people in other parts of the city. But here, since the entire map is blue, means you're doing a great job providing services equally throughout the city. This map is for customer service from city employees. Most of the map here is dark blue, which is the highest possible rating. There is that one area in yellowish, which isn't a bad rating, but just a little bit lower than the blue. But for the most part, the ratings are very, very positive all across the city when it comes to customer service from city employees. And this map is for how residents feel about Meridian as a place to live. Not only is the entire map blue, but most of it dark blue, which again is the highest possible rating. So I mentioned earlier that satisfaction with city services is much higher in Meridian than other communities. You're rated above the U. S. Average in forty out of the forty-one areas that we compared, and what also stands out is you're rated significantly higher in thirty-seven out of those areas, and by significantly, I mean five percent or more above. The area that rated the farthest above the U. S. Average was customer service from city employees. Eighty-three percent of respondents gave a positive rating. The national and regional average are only forty-one percent. And then another area that really stood out, seventy-six percent of residents gave positive ratings for the overall quality of city services, and you can see the national average is barely over fifty percent. Here are comparisons for major categories of city services. In all seven areas, your ratings were more than ten percentage points above the U. S. Average. So this includes trash, sewer, water, recycling, code enforcement, communications, and traffic enforcement. Here are comparisons for parks and recreation. Your ratings were above the U. S. Average in all seven areas. For pathways for walking and biking trails, the ratings were just a little bit above the U. S. Average, really more on par. But the areas where that really stand out, where you rate far above other communities are athletic fields and youth and adult sports programs. Here are the comparisons for public safety. You're rated above the U. S. Average in all ten areas. This includes the overall quality of fire department, overall quality of emergency medical services, the overall feeling of safety in the city. Ninety-two percent of respondents said they feel safe in the city. You can see the national and regional average are only in the mid to upper sixty percent range, and then also the overall quality of police services. Then for all three areas of communications, your ratings are more than twenty percentage points above the U. S. Average. And this chart shows comparisons for perceptions of the city. As I mentioned earlier, almost nine out of ten residents feel Meridian is an excellent or a good place to live. The national average right now is only at fifty percent, and nearly nine out of ten also gave positive ratings to Meridian as a place to raise a family, and you can see the national average is barely over sixty percent. So we also compared these results to previous surveys. Overall, the ratings are down a little bit compared to two thousand and twenty, but again, that's a trend we've seen all over the country the past couple of years. These are the areas with the biggest increases in satisfaction since two thousand and twenty. A lot of it's related to parks and recreation programming, both adult and youth sports programs. Other areas that had the biggest increases were employment opportunities. Meridian has a place to start a business and conduct business and developing a strong local economy. Here are the areas with the biggest decreases since the last survey. Several of these are related to growth, which is common for a fast-growing city. How well the city is managing growth, quality of housing, and a variety of options, and then development in Meridian. Now, we'll take a look at the top overall priorities. Here, we asked residents which three priorities should receive the most emphasis from city leaders over the next three years. So the top three priorities were roads, traffic, and transportation. Really, that one stands alone as number one. Nearly seven out of ten residents pick that as one of the three highest priorities. The second and third highest priorities were growth and development and education and schools. Those were the top three priorities on your last survey as well. Affordable housing is fourth. It was also fourth on the last survey, but this year, the percentage is a little bit higher than it was on the last survey. So it's still the fourth highest priority, but immersion is a little more of a high priority than it was a couple of years ago. Here, we have the important satisfaction rating. This analysis is based on two sets of data. First, we asked residents how satisfied they are with services. Then we asked as a follow-up, which should receive the most emphasis from city leaders over the next couple of years. So the idea behind this is that those areas that have a combination of lower satisfaction ratings, but at the same time, are the most important, should be the highest priority. Doesn't mean you should ignore the lower level of priorities, but making improvements in the higher priorities will impact the greatest number of residents. So the top priority is planning and zoning. Second is traffic enforcement. Third are police services. The satisfaction ratings for police services are very high, but it's still an area that residents rated as important, which is pretty common in most communities, meaning they want to maintain that level of service. Then here, we asked residents with transportation improvements. They feel should receive the most emphasis over the next two years. The top priority was widening roadways, followed by improving intersections, and then shared bike and pedestrian facilities. So that's everything that I had. Just a quick recap. We saw that residents, once again, have a very positive perception of the city. Overall satisfaction ratings remain very high. They're down just a little bit, but once again, they're significantly higher than cities in most areas, especially when it comes to the overall quality of city services and then customer service from city employees. And the top overall priorities, roads, traffic, and transportation, growth and development, and education, schools. And those were the top three priorities on the last survey as well. So we found that residents, I mentioned, have a very positive perception of the city. This was the very first question on the survey. We asked residents to rate their perception in a number of different ways. There's a number of questions on the survey asked on an eleven-point scale from zero to ten. So the dark blue are ratings of nine and ten. Those are the most positive ratings. The light blue is seven to eight. The gray is four to six, so not a bad rating, but more of average. And then the pink are ratings of zero to three. So the blue are the positive, the pink are the red, pink are the negative. Obviously, the positive ratings far outweigh the negative overall. If you look at the top of this chart, most residents gave very positive ratings to Meridian as a place to live and as a place to raise a family. We also asked residents about the quality of life in the city. Most residents feel like customer service from city employees and the overall quality of city services exceeds expectations. In fact, for customer service from city employees, forty-three percent feel it greatly exceeds their expectations. Again, the dark blue is a nine or a ten, means it greatly exceeds their expectations. We asked residents how they rate the value they receive for city tax dollars and fees. Most residents gave positive responses. Sixty-eight percent gave a rating of seven or above, feeling that they do receive good value for city taxes and fees. And here, we asked residents to rate major categories of city services. On this question, we're asking residents to rate these areas at the big picture departmental level, and then later on in the survey, we asked about some more specific areas within some of these categories. So once again, the positive ratings far outweigh the negative. The lowest rated area was planning and zoning, but even for that, you have forty-three percent who gave positive ratings, twenty-five percent negative. For most of these areas, five percent or less of residents gave negative ratings. So very, very positive ratings really across the board. So we also found that satisfaction with the overall quality of city services is high in all parts of the city. Here again, we have a map of the city, and we broke the results out by census block group. So these are very small areas. We created a map like this for every question asked on that eleven-point scale, so there's well over a hundred maps in the report. This one is for the overall quality of city services. The entire map is blue, and in fact, a couple of areas are dark blue, which is the highest possible rating. So this means that residents in all parts of the city are satisfied with the overall quality of city services. Sometimes what happens is, even if the ratings are very positive overall, once you start breaking it into these smaller areas, you'll see some areas where residents are not as satisfied or don't feel like they're getting as good of services as people in other parts of the city. But here, since the entire map is blue, means you're doing a great job providing services equally throughout the city. This map is for customer service from city employees. Most of the map here is dark blue, which is the highest possible rating. There is that one area in yellowish, which isn't a bad rating, but just a little bit lower than the blue. But for the most part, the ratings are very, very positive all across the city when it comes to customer service from city employees. And this map is for how residents feel about Meridian as a place to live. Not only is the entire map blue, but most of it dark blue, which again is the highest possible rating. So I mentioned earlier that satisfaction with city services is much higher in Meridian than other communities. You're rated above the U. S. Average in forty out of the forty-one areas that we compared, and what also stands out is you're rated significantly higher in thirty-seven out of those areas, and by significantly, I mean five percent or more above. The area that rated the farthest above the U. S. Average was customer service from city employees. Eighty-three percent of respondents gave a positive rating. The national and regional average are only forty-one percent. And then another area that really stood out, seventy-six percent of residents gave positive ratings for the overall quality of city services, and you can see the national average is barely over fifty percent. Here are comparisons for major categories of city services. In all seven areas, your ratings were more than ten percentage points above the U. S. Average. So this includes trash, sewer, water, recycling, code enforcement, communications, and traffic enforcement. Here are comparisons for parks and recreation. Your ratings were above the U. S. Average in all seven areas. For pathways for walking and biking trails, the ratings were just a little bit above the U. S. Average, really more on par. But the areas where that really stand out, where you rate far above other communities are athletic fields and youth and adult sports programs. Here are the comparisons for public safety. You're rated above the U. S. Average in all ten areas. This includes the overall quality of fire department, overall quality of emergency medical services, the overall feeling of safety in the city. Ninety-two percent of respondents said they feel safe in the city. You can see the national and regional average are only in the mid to upper sixty percent range, and then also the overall quality of police services. Then for all three areas of communications, your ratings are more than twenty percentage points above the U. S. Average. And this chart shows comparisons for perceptions of the city. As I mentioned earlier, almost nine out of ten residents feel Meridian is an excellent or a good place to live. The national average right now is only at fifty percent, and nearly nine out of ten also gave positive ratings to Meridian as a place to raise a family, and you can see the national average is barely over sixty percent. So we also compared these results to previous surveys. Overall, the ratings are down a little bit compared to two thousand and twenty, but again, that's a trend we've seen all over the country the past couple of years. These are the areas with the biggest increases in satisfaction since two thousand and twenty. A lot of it's related to parks and recreation programming, both adult and youth sports programs. Other areas that had the biggest increases were employment opportunities. Meridian has a place to start a business and conduct business and developing a strong local economy. Here are the areas with the biggest decreases since the last survey. Several of these are related to growth, which is common for a fast-growing city. How well the city is managing growth, quality of housing, and a variety of options, and then development in Meridian. Now, we'll take a look at the top overall priorities. Here, we asked residents which three priorities should receive the most emphasis from city leaders over the next three years. So the top three priorities were roads, traffic, and transportation. Really, that one stands alone as number one. Nearly seven out of ten residents pick that as one of the three highest priorities. The second and third highest priorities were growth and development and education and schools. Those were the top three priorities on your last survey as well. Affordable housing is fourth. It was also fourth on the last survey, but this year, the percentage is a little bit higher than it was on the last survey. So it's still the fourth highest priority, but immersion is a little more of a high priority than it was a couple of years ago. Here, we have the important satisfaction rating. This analysis is based on two sets of data. First, we asked residents how satisfied they are with services. Then we asked as a follow-up, which should receive the most emphasis from city leaders over the next couple of years. So the idea behind this is that those areas that have a combination of lower satisfaction ratings, but at the same time, are the most important, should be the highest priority. Doesn't mean you should ignore the lower level of priorities, but making improvements in the higher priorities will impact the greatest number of residents. So the top priority is planning and zoning. Second is traffic enforcement. Third are police services. The satisfaction ratings for police services are very high, but it's still an area that residents rated as important, which is pretty common in most communities, meaning they want to maintain that level of service. Then here, we asked residents with transportation improvements. They feel should receive the most emphasis over the next two years. The top priority was widening roadways, followed by improving intersections, and then shared bike and pedestrian facilities. So that's everything that I had. Just a quick recap. We saw that residents, once again, have a very positive perception of the city. Overall satisfaction ratings remain very high. They're down just a little bit, but once again, they're significantly higher than cities in most areas, especially when it comes to the overall quality of city services and then customer service from city employees. And the top overall priorities, roads, traffic, and transportation, growth and development, and education, schools. With that, does anyone have any questions or comments?
Thank you. Council, questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Strater.
Thanks for the presentation. One concern that I have, I saw the planning and zoning services satisfaction score, and do you have a way of delving in a little more about if people's concern about growth and development is kind of mixed in with that score? Or if there is a specific concern with those services?
Yeah, I think those are related, but we can also do some more analysis and see if there is a correlation between the two. We also dug deeper and provided some cross tabs, which break the results out by council district, by other demographic questions such as age, number of years lived in the city, geographic area such as the census block group. So that's something we can look a little more into. I feel like they are correlated, but definitely something we can take a closer look at.
Thanks.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Perro.
I have four or five questions. Can I just shoot them off one after the other?
Yep, go ahead.
Thank you. So a couple of questions about the demographics. Did you, I know most of these surveys get information on how long the residents have lived in the city of Meridian, and then, of course, the assumption is that they've lived in other cities so that they can make a comparison of our services versus others. Do you have that information with you? The length of time on average that the residents were here?
That's in the full report. Yeah, that is one of the demographic questions, how long they've lived in the city.
Okay, because I, I think Councilwoman Strater is that we're on the same page, which is that a lot of folks don't realize that transportation is not in our control, and then they kind of roll that in with planning as an element, and so that's not something, you know, that's the challenge with, you know, when questions are posed about what priorities should the city make, and transportation being one of them, we don't have any control over most of that. So I guess, you know, the public, even folks that have lived here a long time, aren't aware that that's the case. So I don't know how to filter these results through not knowing whether folks really realize. You know, I've talked with Dave about this, so maybe, are you going to come clarify that for me? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Strater, it's a great question, and I think you're hitting.
Mr. Mayor, I do have one question. It's follow up to Councilwoman Schrader's, and maybe. In the next couple of weeks, if you're able to provide that comparison from those concerned with growth. And those respondents concerned with planning and zoning services. And, and see where they overlap. And also maybe note on your map, which, if you have the data that shows the location of each respondent. Curious where folks might be concerned on one of those topics, but not the other, and where they reside. If there's some region or a community that's more concerned than others with the manner in which we provide the service versus growth-related concerns.
Yeah, absolutely. We can definitely do that. I believe we have maps for those questions already, but we also can, can compare those two results.
Hey, just know councils where, we talked about this a little bit, the director being today, Dave's gonna be leading the team. We're gonna be pulling people from finance, from public works who really know. Data, so that we can do some of the self-selection ourselves to help identify just these exact issues that you're referring to. A little bit more deeper. We only got the information in PDF form, so we'll have to try to get a little bit, you know, sortable data. That we can do some of the, this ourselves, so we'll be working with them on that, because these are, these are. The, the numbers do suggest we, we really need to have a good understanding, to have a good conversation. And potentially, if there's anything the council wants to do on any of these issues moving forward, to be able to make informed direction at that time. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks, everyone.
Mr. Holden.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adjourn our work session. I have a motion to adjourn, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post nay, the ayes have it, we are adjourned.
Council, we'll call them in order for the record. It is September 13th, 2022 at 6:00 PM. We'll begin this rigorous city council meeting with roll call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Strater.
Here.
Councilman Burnt.
Here.
Councilwoman Perrow.
Yeah.
Councilman Borton.
Here.
Councilman Hoagland.
Here.
Mayor Simmsen.
Here. Next time, it's Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd all please rise and join us in the pledge. Next up is the community invocation, which tonight will be delivered by Darrell Zackman of Calvert Chapel Treasure Valley. If you would all please join us in the community invocation or take this as a moment of silence and reflection. Heavenly Father, we do thank you for your presence, your goodness, your righteousness. We do ask humbly for your grace and mercy today. We pray for wisdom for our city leadership. We are grateful for them. We ask God that you would help them with the issues that are before them. Pray, Lord, that you just continue to make this place a peaceful place. We pray you protect us from evil. We pray that your will would be done and accomplished in our great city and that it would be a place where there is good quality of life for the residents and a model to other cities. So, Lord, bless this night, we pray, in the name of our Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you.
Next item up is the adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman.
Before I make a motion here for our agenda, I just want to note that items two and three under action items will be opened together. However, they will be separate motions when we take action on that. So, Mr. Mayor, I move adoption of the agenda as published.
Second.
Have a motion second to adopt the agenda as published. Is there any discussion? If not, ever since by by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it and the agenda is adopted. Next time up is public forum. Mr. Quirk.
Mr. Mayor, we had one sign in, Todd Green.
Screen, if you'll come forward, you'll be recognized for three minutes and that's good. Go ahead.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yep.
Thank you for your time. Mayor Simison and city council members, thank you for this opportunity to speak to you in person. I want to address the proclamation released by the mayor's office on September ninth, twenty twenty-two, in support of the LGBT events that took place in Boise last weekend. While I agree that all people should be able to live free of discrimination and harm and treated with compassion and respect, I fear this proclamation puts the city of Meridian and all its inhabitants squarely in the crosshairs of Almighty God's judgment. Regardless of our desire to support friends and family members and their lifestyle decisions, the Holy Bible calls all forms of homosexuality sin. If an individual chooses that lifestyle, they are rejecting the Lord of Heaven. Whether or not one accepts the Bible as God's word, it has survived humanity's concerted efforts to wipe it from existence for two millennia. I'm sure you recall the story of God's judgment on Sodom and Gomor in the book of Genesis. Throughout scripture, the Bible calls homosexuality immoral, perverse, and an abomination. First Corinthians six nine warns us not to deceive ourselves. It says that neither homosexuals nor sodomites will inherit the kingdom of God. According to the scriptures, only enemies of the Lord of Heaven consider homosexuality and transgenderism a good thing. I'm convinced there is a heavy population of God-fearing Christians like myself living within the city of Meridian. I wanted to remind you of our point of view regarding this proclamation. We have no problem living with those from different walks of life in peace and harmony. We respect decisions different from our own as long as they don't encroach upon our constitutionally protected rights. We seek harmony with our neighbors and to live peaceful and quiet lives, but we are also called to warn of the eternal wrath to come. As I stand before you, I do not mean to cause offense. I consider this moment as my duty to my community. Anyone that hears my voice, if you consider yourself a Christian and were in favor of this proclamation, I encourage you to read your Bible again. The Bible is like the U. S. Constitution in that it was written once to be interpreted as written. It is not a living document that changes with the times. Do not deceive yourself. God will not be mocked. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Quirk, have anybody else sign up on?
Mr. Mayor, that was it.
Okay. And with that, we will move into action items. First item up is a public hearing for the Shops of Victory H twenty twenty-two dash zero zero six zero. We will open this public hearing. Staff comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. First item on the agenda this evening is the Shops of Victory Development Agreement Modification. The site consists of three point six acres, but the subject DA is only relevant to zero point eight four acres of land. It's currently zoned C. C. In the city and it's located at thirty-three hundred South Eagle Road or the southeast corner of Victory and Eagle Road. This property again is one commercial lot within a three lot commercial subdivision known as the Shops of Victory Development. It was annexed in two thousand and eight with a development agreement. In that current DA, all C. C. All allowed uses in the C. C. Zone are allowed to be established on the subject property. The most recent approvals for the subject property includes a conditional use permit, which allowed a drive-through coffee shop on this specific lot, as you can see here in the graphic to your right. As part of one of the restricted DA provisions does limit the hours of operation from six A. M. To ten P. M. because of its how close this that's proximity to the adjacent residential uses on the south boundary. The applicant here is is before you this evening to discuss changing those hours for this specific lot only for the coffee business. Staff has prepared some recommended DA provisions, so we've had an opportunity to look at what was in the current DA. Because there's multiple property owners on this subject site now, we felt it was better to have a new DA. So we went back and looked at that existing development agreement, pulled out what seemed to be applicable to this site. And this is what we're proposing before you this evening as part of the DA mod. So really, the a lot of these are existing provisions in the DA that carried over and made sense to stay with running with the land. And then the only change is the modification to the hours for this specific lot, which the applicant and staff is supportive of changing the hours of operation from five A. M. Or from six A. M. To a five A. M. Start for the coffee shop. Had a chance to look at the public record. Looks like there was a gentleman, David Palumbo submitted some comments on multiple applications in the area, not just specific to this one, but he's concerned with the amount of growth in the area. I've had a chance to speak with the neighbor, the most impacted neighbor adjacent to this property here. He's here this evening. He's supportive of the of the hours of operation change as well. So again, staff's recommending approval with the DA provisions before you, and I'll stand for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Bill. Counsel, any questions for staff? Is the applicant here? Good evening. You can say your name and address for the record. We recognize for up to fifteen minutes.
Jason White, White Laser Development Company, eighty-three eighty-five West Emerald Street, Boise, Idaho, eight through seven oh four. Bill, thank you for, I think he nailed that. I want to change the hours of operation by an hour. And we we agree with with his his findings, and I stand for questions.
Counsel, any questions for the applicant? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Squirt, can one sign up to provide testimony on this item?
Mr. Mayor, to the applicant and Robert Aldridge.
If there's anybody else who'd like to provide testimony on this item, either in the room or online, if you're online, please just raise your hand feature.
Bob Aldridge, I'm thirty-three hundred East Falcon Drive in Meridian. I'm the backyard to this. I've worked with these developers for now a lot of years. They've been uniformly extremely accommodating, very helpful. They've done light restrictions way past. I have no problems with this. I know the decibel levels on this. I doubt seriously I'm going to have any problem with it in five A. M. I'm not going to have any problem with it. I'm not going to be awake. I very much urge this to be done.
Thank you very much. Counsel, any questions? All right. Thank you. There's nobody online besides city staff, so is there anybody present that'd like to provide testimony on this item? Okay, with the applicant, like to make any final comments or wave that right? You're waving that right? Counsel, I have a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor.
That's number.
Second.
Have a motion second to close the public hearing. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The public greens close, Councilmember.
Move that we approve item number H dash two zero two two dash zero zero six zero.
Second.
Have a motion a second to approve item H twenty twenty-two dash zero zero six zero. Is there any discussion? If not, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Strater.
Aye.
Burnt.
Aye.
Perrow.
Aye.
Borton.
Aye.
Hoagland.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carries. I'm agreed to. Have a good evening. Next item up is items two and three, which is a public hearing for Torino Locust Grove Subdivision, H twenty twenty-two dash zero zero three eight and S. H. P. Twenty twenty-two dash zero 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 eight. We will open both of these public hearings hearings with staff comments.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Next two items, I should say, are both related. This project was continued from last hearing because somehow the short plat was left inadvertently left off the agenda. And so we wanted to make sure that both of these projects stayed together for you this evening. The site consists of one point zero three acres of land currently zoned R. One in Ada County. And the property address is eight seventy South Locust Grove Road. Comprehensive plan designation for this property is medium density residential, which anticipates densities between three to eight dwelling units to the acre. The project that's before you this evening comes in at three point seven dwelling units to the acre. You can see here in the arrow that the existing property is vacant currently. The applicant is before you tonight to discuss annexation of this lot with to the R. Eight zoning district and then further subdivided from one Ada County parcel into four single-family residential home lots. If you had a chance to look at some of the public testimony, some of the neighbors in the area that provided testimony on written testimony on this project got confused that this was for a multifamily project. That is not the case. Again, the applicant is proposing to construct four homes on the site at a gross density of three point seven dwelling units to the acre. Pretty pretty easy project. The access is coming off of Locust Grove because there is no local street access, so the applicant is proposing a common driveway. With the original submittal, the common driveway did stop short on the property. And as part of the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing, we wanted to make sure that the common drive actually got extended to the eastern driveway, as you see here in this exhibit. That is just so that we can facilitate access to the local street when the adjacent property develops. That's that's critical to what we require in the code. Once this common drive does connect to the local street to the east, this access is conditioned in the development agreement to be an emergency access only. We've also coordinated with the fire department to make sure, just to let the council know that this common driver will be beyond the hundred and fifty-foot parameter per the fire code. But the applicant and I have worked with the fire department to allow it to be go beyond that with the caveat that the applicant delineate where the hundred and fifty-foot mark is. The fire department knows how far they can pull in with their fire truck and and fight any fires on the existing residents. If there's any fires on on any of the new homes that come forward that are built on the site, I should say. Because the site is under five acres in size, the only required open space is the landscape buffer along Locust Grove, which is what you see here with the twenty-five-foot wide landscape buffer. There are existing trees on the site that will also be need to get mitigated for as part of their approval. And the applicant will have to comply with all fencing regulations. The Planning and Zoning Commission heard this project at their August fourth hearing. They did recommend approval of both applications. The applicant testified in support, who was Jeremy Roush, and then, as I mentioned to you, there was quite a few letters of opposition from the surrounding neighbors due to the fact that, again, they felt this was going to be a multifamily project, which it is not. No, no key issues of public testimony. The only item discussed at the Planning and Zoning Commission, again, was the extension of the common driveway and making sure that we got the condition of approval right in the staff report. And commission didn't side with staff's recommendation and modified that DA provision. There are no outstanding issues before you, and as I mentioned on the last hearing, we did have additional testimony from some some residents from David Palumbo and Sean Freeman. Again, both are concerned about the amount of development occurring in Meridian. So with that, staff and commission have recommended approval and will stand for any questions you may have.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember.
One question, Bill. Thank you for that. I was wondering why the I was wondering why the zoning difference between Ada County versus the city of Meridian. Ada County being, you know, different, a little bit less dense than what is proposed here.
Mayor, councilman burnt. So essentially, R. One means one dwelling unit to the acre in the county and R. Eight. Although it's not, the zoning code doesn't drive density. It's based on the comprehensive plan, which at a minimum is three with a maximum of eight. So this applicant has decided to go with four instead of the minimum of three, which is allowed under the comprehensive plan. That's really that is the difference here. It's just we anticipate a little bit higher density based on redevelopment of the property.
Councilmember.
I'm assuming that 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 zoning was done previous to this many years ago, so maybe that's.
Yeah, mayor, members, council member burnt. That is correct. There used to be a residence on there and it got removed. And now it's a vacant lot and and being sold for redevelopment purposes.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pearl.
Thank you, Bill. I watched the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing and I was under the impression that the applicant was going to speak with Chief Bonjourneau before it got to council and get all of that squared away. So did that indeed happen? It sounded like from your presentation that maybe that wasn't wrapped up yet.
Mayor, councilwoman Pearl, it's wrapped up. I had a chance to follow up with Chief Barn Journal after the hearing, let him know some of the conversations of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and that's what I that's why we amended the condition. And as the applicant comes to record the plat, he'll have to have written approval from the fire department. But again, the fire department is going to require that he delineate the hundred and fifty-foot mark on the common driveway so they know where that that mark is for their standard. So he was good with that.
Mr. Mayor, one more question.
Councilman Pearl.
Thank you. So with the extension of this private drive, is it no longer become a common driveway? Now it's considered a street? Or how does that work? Because we we've tried to limit, of course, the amount of residences that come off a private drive. And so what I didn't see anything in the staff report that had concerns that there were four instead of three. Is that part of the reason why? Or is this just a part of the reason why they want to do the extension is so this is not no longer a common drive? Or is it just mostly related to the fire department's concerns?
Yeah, Mayor, councilwoman Perrow, it's it will remain a common drive. It's going to be platted as such, so it will stay that way regardless of that being access being closed. What we don't have currently is whether or not any public streets will be stubbed to the eastern boundary for that driveway to tie into or if someone will come forward with their own common driveway. And essentially, we could have additional homes taking access off an extended common driveway. But in our opinion, that's that outweighs keeping an access to Locust Grove, which is so close to a planned roundabout or a signalized intersection. So we're making a concession here that the better option is to allow more homes to take access from a common driveway or from a local street than maintaining the access to Locust Grove in the long term.
Counsel, any additional questions for staff? Is the applicant here this evening? Okay. I guess there's no applicant this evening that we can identify. So do we have anyone sign up to provide testimony on this item?
Mr. Mayor, we did not.
Is there anybody present that would like to provide testimony on this item? No one wishing to provide testimony? No applicant? Counsel, what's your desire?
Our mayor, counsel, I had a chance to speak with the applicant, not before the hearing, but he's he's good with all conditions of approval. If there's any concern from the council not having the applicant here, but typically they we'd like them here to at least say they're in agreement.
Councilmember.
Who is the app?
Jeremy Ralph.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember.
Is he the representative of for the owner? Is he actually the owner of the property?
He's actually the owner.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pearl.
He did state at the Planning and Zoning Commission verbally that he is in agreement with all the conditions. So we do have record of him stating his willingness to do the extension of the road and all those things if there's concern about that.
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, you've heard this ordinance read by title. Is there anybody that like it written in sincerity? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
I move approval of ordinance number twenty-two dash nineteen ninety-four for the mayor to sign and clerk to attest.
Second.
Have a motion to approve ordinance twenty-two dash nineteen ninety-four. Is there any discussion? If not, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Strater.
Aye.
Burton.
Aye.
Perro.
Aye.
Borton.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carries, and the item is agreed to. Next item up is ordinance number twenty-two dash nineteen ninety-two. Ask the clerk to read this ordinance by title.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's an ordinance of the city of Meridian, Idaho, amending ordinance number twenty-one nineteen forty-five, the appropriation ordinance for the fiscal year beginning October one, two thousand and twenty-one, and ending September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two, F. Y. two thousand and twenty-two, by increasing total appropriations from one hundred eighty-five million, one hundred ninety-eight thousand, nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars to one hundred ninety-four million, nine hundred and fifty-five thousand, four hundred and fifty-six dollars, increasing total revenue from one hundred and eighteen million, eight hundred and thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and ninety-four dollars to one hundred and twenty-two million, two hundred and eighty-four thousand, one hundred and fifty-eight dollars, and increasing the use of fund balance from sixty-six million, three hundred and sixty-four, one hundred and sixty-six million, three hundred and sixty-four thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars to seventy-two million, six hundred and seventy-one thousand, two hundred and ninety-eight dollars, and providing an effective date.
Thank you, counsel. You've heard this ordinance read by title. Is anybody that like it written in sincerity? If not, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
Move approval of ordinance number twenty-two dash nineteen ninety-two.
Have a motion a second to approve ordinance number twenty-two dash nineteen ninety-two. Is there any discussion? If not, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Strater.
Aye.
Burton.
Aye.
Perro.
Aye.
Borton.
Aye.
Hoagland.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carries, and the ordinance is agreed to. Counsel, anything on their future meeting topics? Or do I have a motion to adjourn? Move to adjourn. Motion adjourn, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. We are adjourned.